I want to take this opportunity to welcome you to our first February, February 1, Spotsylvania County School Board meeting. We have a quorum, all members are present. If you have a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind please putting on silent or turning it off so it will not be a distraction to the meeting. And we'd like to also recognize Deputy Carter in the back of the room for taking time out to be with us this evening. Thank you for coming Deputy Carter. Well, without any further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. Twig to rise and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Could the Assembly please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. We have our agenda in front of us, 1.03. We have a motion on the floor to adopt or approve the agenda. Agenda properly moved by Ms. Blaylock, seconded by Mr. Blaine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, budget is approved 7-0. Moving on to 2.01, public hearing on a superintendent's proposed school budget for fiscal year 2016-2017. Dr. Martin, please.
Good. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. The public, the budget public hearing provides an opportunity for the public to make, make comment prior to the board's approval of a budget for the fifth, 2016-17 fiscal year. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes to speak in regards to the budget. At this time, we ask that speakers limit their comments to those pertaining to the upcoming budget or budget process. School board policy requires each speaker to state their name and address or voting district for the record. Students must state their name and school. At this time, we'd like to open up the floor to anyone that has any comments about the budget proposal for fiscal year 17. As of right now, Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up, but I'd like to-
Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to address the board as it pertains to the budget? Is there anyone present that would like to come forward and address the board as it pertains to the budget? Hearing none, we will close 2.01, 3.01, blended learning, Harrison Road Elementary. Ms. Flannard, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Tonight Harrison Road Elementary School is pleased to showcase a snapshot of the 21st Century 3rd grade classroom. In this presentation, you will see an example of how teachers integrate technology on a daily basis using web-based programs to introduce and practice skills needed for student success in the modern classroom. Specifically highlighted will be a classroom mini lesson on main idea and details using the NearPod application. The interactive, the interactive application allows the teacher to keep students engaged as they participate in the teacher-directed portion of the lesson. You will note that during the lesson, students are able to enhance their classroom experience by moving beyond simply sitting and listening. In this blended classroom, students interact with slides by using drawing and highlighting tools, participating in polls, and even taking some short quizzes. This information provides the teacher with instant informal data on how students understand the concepts being taught. And using this program allows all data to be saved and used at a later time to help form instructional planning.
Good evening, Dr. Baker, Baker, members of the board. I'm Ms. Parsley, and I have brought with me some friends who would like to join you to go through our mini lesson this evening. Kids? So, as you know, we're very fortunate to be a part of the technology pilot for Spotsylvania County this year. I wrote a proposal for one-on-one devices and was awarded 13 Chromebooks for my classroom. The administration at Harrison Road shared my vision for personalized learning and was able to supply the class with enough Chromebooks for one-on-one device every day in the classroom. We have enjoyed all of the project-based learning activities, interactive lessons, and my favorite, being able to personalize instruction to meet the needs for every student in the class. So I think we have everyone logged on and we are ready to practice with main idea and detail. Alright, so today, we're going to have a short mini lesson, and we are going to review how to find the main idea and supporting details in text. So think back to our main idea and details poster that we use in our Benchmark Universe reading program. Remember that details are the little things going on in the picture, and the main idea is the big picture. What I would like you to do is I would like you to circle some of the supporting details in the poster in green, and then I want you to circle the main idea in the poster in red. So what you'll see is on the screen is the teacher's computer. The student's computer will follow along with the presentation as I move from slide to slide. What I get to see is how the students are understanding main idea and detail. So what they're doing right now is they're using a coloring tool on the computer with a poster that they've seen previously when I introduced main idea and detail. And they're going to circle in green some of the small details, and then they'll circle the main idea in red. So as students submit their answers, the teacher will be able to see immediately which students were able to understand the concept and which students might need a little bit of extra support. So far, they look really good. They're working so hard up there. Alright, we're waiting on two more. So once we get all of the feedback from the students, we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So what we're going to do now is we're going to take the strategies that we use to find the main idea and detail in our poster, and we're going to use those strategies to find the main idea and detail within text. So again, they've used a poster that we, they've seen previously in an introduction lesson. So now what the students and the members of the board are going to do are find some details within that passage. One of the features of this program that I personally love is for the students to be able to answer the questions, and then the teacher can share those answers with the whole class, but the students do not see whose answer it is. So it's completely anonymous. We can go over materials if there are a few students who need a little bit of a reminder or some support, and it's completely anonymous. So, so students don't have to fear answering any of the questions. So you can see we have two students who have submitted some answers already. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and we're going to move to the next slide. I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. Alright, so what do we have now is we have a poll. The student's computers see a question, and that question is going to ask what the main idea was of that passage they previously read. Now, the teacher's computers, you can see, is, is you can see which letter choice or which answer the students are choosing. I can see the percentage of the class, how many are choosing a correct answer, how many are choosing an incorrect answer. And again, it's for the teacher to be able to use. So once we finish with this mini lesson, should take 10 to 15 minutes in class, I can then go into my small group guided reading instruction, and I can see which students need a little bit more help with main idea and detail, and I can target my instruction, instruction right away. I don't need to wait to analyze any data, I have the data already instantly for me, and we can go through with any misunderstandings immediately following the mini lesson. You guys did a great job with main idea and details. Alright, good job guys, you can bring your computers back.
Do you guys have any questions, comments?
I'm going to open up to board members, do we have any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you, and I heard you're a fabulous teacher.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you letting us come out and do this. They were really excited to share what we do-
They did a great job.
-on a daily basis, and they're third graders, and so using this technology has been a big deal to them, and it's amazing how well they've adapted to using Google Drive and research, and they've, they've done an amazing job.
Well, I was speaking with Alyssa, and she said that, I asked her, did they have these laptops all the time, and she said yes, and this was her favorite thing to do, and I just think the way you have the real-time data right there-
Oh, it's amazing.
Yeah, I think I would have learned a lot better this way when I was in third grade.
Yeah, it helps me learn. I tell them I have 24 bosses all day long telling me what to do every minute, and this is just part of that data that I get in showing me what I need to do to personalize that instruction for, for each student.
Ms. Shelley.
The, the interaction, just the kids being able to be participatory in, in the finding of the main ideas, and everybody's got their own computer, and everybody's doing it their own, and the instant feedback for you. Ethan was awesome at teaching me how to figure it out, because at first I couldn't do it. So, thank you Ethan, you're an awesome teacher too.
Yeah, we, we, I have an inclusion setting in my classroom, so we work with special education students as well, and this is a really big benefit for them. They can participate, and again, it's anonymous, so, so they can send in answers, and they're not afraid to participate in the lessons. It's very effective, so, thank you.
Mr. Twig.
Fascinating learning tool, I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Sounds like, it appears as though that would even fit the ADD student curriculum, much like I represent.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I want to thank you for your students that came up and shared with us. Ian shared with me, and that's a pretty smart young man right there. And it, it reminded me also of the great advances we've made in the way we teach children and how they engage. Way back then, when I was in third grade, my teacher walked around with a ruler to get my attention, so I'm glad we've made the advances that we've made-
Mutual.
-in, in, in learning. So thank you very much for sharing with us, and for the young people that shared with us, we thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was just going to say, I see a lot of proud parents and grandparents and friends, and can they stand at principal? Can you all stand? You have great, great students.
Again, thank you very much. Moving on to 4.01, divisions, division spelling bee winners. Ms. Flannard.
Yes, thank you again. The 2016 Division Spelling Bee was held on January 9th. Students representing all 17 elementary schools and all seven middle schools participated in this year's spelling bee. The event was coordinated by Ms. Stephanie Fellinger, who's in the audience with us. Thank you Stephanie. Many thanks go out to the staff who assisted with the competition, because without them it would not have been possible. A special thank you goes out to Ms. Amanda Blaylock, our Master of Ceremonies, as well as Catherine Latelier, who was our pronouncer. The first place winner of this competition will advance to the 11th Annual Freelance Star Regional Spelling Bee, and that is being held on Saturday, March 5th at 1:00 at James Monroe High School in Fredericksburg. The regional winner will be eligible to participate in May at the 89th Annual Scribs National Spelling Bee in Washington DC. In the event, the first place winner is not able to attend, the runner-up will represent Spotsylvania County Public Schools. It is with great pleasure that we recognize this year's first place and runner-up winners for the 2016 spelling bee, and when I call your name, if you would please come forward. Our first place winner, Yah Bukke Battlefield Middle School. Congratulations to Yah and to Taylor, they did a great job. I will be very honest, there was many words that I was questioning if they were English, and they were phenomenal. And I would like to take a moment for their families that are present, if you could please stand to be recognized as well. Mrs. Flannard, would you continue with 4.02? Yes ma'am, thank you. Sadexo's Healthy High School Challenge winners. The Healthy High School National Challenge is an event designed to reinforce the importance of making healthy food choices for our students. The goal is to further the nutrition education of high school students through a national challenge that plays off the competitive spirit by encouraging them to make healthy food choices in order to earn points for their schools. Sadexo managed high school programs around the country to try to outperform each other by earning points for served reimbursable meals and healthy à la carte snacks and beverages. The more meals, healthy snacks and beverages, the more points each school earns towards winning the challenge. The Healthy High School Challenge ran during the month of October, this past October. This year, Sadexo had 203 high schools participate in the challenge. Seventy-seven of those schools were awarded prizes. The following Spotsylvania County Public High Schools are being recognized for their participation in the program. And as I announce the school, would the principal or designated representative please come forward to receive the award from, I do believe we have Mr. Naco in the house? Please come forward, from Sadexo Food Service Director. And the first school we have this evening is Chancellor High School, which received $500.
If we could, before the young folks leave again, let's give our spelling bee winner and runner-up another round of applause. And the young students from Harrison Road Elementary, let's give them a round of applause. Outstanding, we appreciate your engagement and your learning. Thank you very much. Moving on to 5.01, public comments, Dr. Martin.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. At this time, Mr. Chairman, we do not have anybody signed up, so I turn it back over to you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward for the opportunity for public comments? Is there anyone that would like to come forward to offer public comments to the board? Hearing none, we'll close this section and move on to board member comments. 5.02, we'll start with Ms. Graham.
Well, we just concluded our second work session for the budget development this evening, and we have addressed many needs, nowhere near as many as all of them, but we've definitely met a good number of them, filling some positions, taking care of our mandatory increases, taking care of our pay raises and needs, and there's so much more that we all wish we could do, but we definitely have a good budget, and I feel confident in what we will be presenting to the board of supervisors in a couple of weeks, and we'll be improving next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham.
I do have a couple of comments to make, and I've been very concerned with some of the newspaper articles I, I've been reading in, in several newspapers actually relative to a bill going through the House that enables parents to establish a savings account using state monies, which be taken away from the local school district. Our, our underfunded schools cannot afford to lose any additional money. And this particular bill needs everybody to take a look at it and figure out where you stand, and to call your legislators and argue that they're saying and going in the absolutely wrong direction. There was a editorial Sunday morning in the Freelance Star, which said, "Don't sabotage our schools, save them." And this is a major concern to me frankly, and as you look at and learn more about that particular item, which may take, one estimate $3,800 per student that's involved out of our funding program, can be very significant for us. So, my personal appeal, this is not a viewpoint of the board, we have not yet discussed it, but I ask you to look in, at the reports that you read in the newspaper and take time to keep up, and that's in addition to the Charter School Amendment that's going to be voted on, I understand, tomorrow. If there is any effort you can put in, it's going to be appreciated.
Mr. Blaine, thank you. Mr. Twig.
Thank you, I'm encouraged, as I'm very rapidly learning about what makes this school system succeed, I am encouraged by our accomplishments. We've gotten up to 90% graduation rate, which has modestly been improving over the last four to five years. I think that's marvelous. We've met a lot of needs up to present. We do have a boastful request for funds this round. We'll do our best to facilitate each of the determined needs within our county schools, and in the end, it's all going to be about the money, and we'll do our part and do the best we can to get as much as we can towards supporting our school, our successful, the success of our schools. Thank you very much.
Mr. Twig, thank you. Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I just want to echo Ms. Graham's remarks about the, the budget, she said it very well. We had very successful budget work sessions, we look forward to approving this budget next week, and then we'll move on and present to the board of supervisors under the supervision of Mr. Braswell and Ms. Graham. Also, I wanted to, we said this the other day at a work session, but we don't get a very large audience for that, so I really want to take a moment to really thank, give a very special thank you to our maintenance crews, who are able to work tirelessly through the blizzard that we just had, and, I mean, there's just not enough to say for the work they did. The bus drivers who were able to start transporting the kids again safely, just a lot of behind-the-scenes heroes went on the last couple of weeks, and just want to make sure that we thank them. And Mr. Hockaday, I don't believe you're here, Mr. Apprico, you are, be sure and share their, our thanks and our sincere thanks for everything they did to keep our schools up and going. There was an SAT that was to be taken at Massaponics, it's been rescheduled for February the 20th. Report cards are February the 5th now. Any other big dates, I think, that was our, SATs, I've got a lot of questions about that one, but if you were taking that, it is now at Massaponics on February the, the 20th. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also like to extend thanks to, to our maintenance staff and, and Mr. Apprico for the work they did all last night, bringing power, restoring power back to Chancellor Middle, Chancellor High. It was, that was not a simple event, that was a very complicated event. And we also owe thanks to Dominion for being there to help us, you know, restore power, because it was an underground short, and created quite a consternation in the mechanical room, but it required an all-nighter from our maintenance staff to be able to restore power today around noon, so, so that our students and staff can be in school and returning tomorrow. So many thanks to them for that truly effort, and I know that Sean Hockaday was with us for our budget work session, which meant he had been doing a 24-hour stint, not just 12-hour, but 24-hour, and we do thank him and their staff.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Well, Ms. Blaylock and, and Dr. Meyer mentioned, two of the things I wanted to talk about was our maintenance, our maintenance people with our snow removal, and then Chancellor High School. So I just have some housekeeping, I just wanted to, this is a, this is kind of a downer for some people, but just to remind you that February 15th is now a school day, it's one of our makeup days, so just a reminder for that. And then next Tuesday, the board of supervisors will be receiving their budget from their county administrator, so just, I guess to tune into that, we can see where the schools are, are, what, what they're expecting, what he's suggesting for the schools, and then just continue to come, come out, we, we know we've been, we're trying to be very supportive of our schools, and I think we are with this budget, and then to continue to, to mention to your board of supervisors, go to the meetings and let them know what you support with, with the schools, and then of course, anything else in the county, just let them know where your support lies, so that would be helpful to them as well. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I'd like to provide comments as well. The bottom line, in all of our discussions at this particular point center around the budget, it is the, the main effort, and so I'd like to make a few comments as it pertains to the main effort of this board, to provide a budget that meets the needs of our growing, our growing school division. The first and foremost is making sure that our employees have a-
that we have great teachers, great administrators, and great support staff, and we want to make sure that they're properly compensated and that is sustainable. So that's the main effort of our desires and our goals in this budget. We also are concerned with having enough resources available so that our superintendent can meet the needs of this division in areas where we fall short, so that the appropriate amount of resources can be brought to force at that particular location to make change, or a change in a way that's effective for the county and for us as a school division. So that's a supporting effort of the budget. We are excited and absolutely delighted that there's opportunities to reduce and sunset activity fees. In there, you'll see that there's a reduction, again, for the second straight year of $25 in the activity fee, bringing it down to $50. That is huge, in my opinion, towards a lot of middle-class families that are trying to allow their kids to take advantage of the great opportunities that we have at Spotsylvania County. And that reduction is something that we are really excited about eventually sunsetting to, it will be zero at some point in the future. We are continually keeping our eye on other issues as it pertains to compensation with our coaches being properly, or getting their stipends back to the point where they were cut by 20% back in 2009 over the Great Recession. I read an article in the last meeting, School Board Workshop, from a parent that praised the Cortland High School varsity football team for the efforts that those coaches spend not only during season but out of season to mold and develop young men, to mold and develop young men of character. And our society needs, as we watch the news on a daily basis, young people of character, as well as young people that have a, have been equipped to go out and be a force of change in our world in which we live. So we're excited about the budget. We're excited about some of the benefits that we've emphasized in the budget, and we look forward to engaging the Board of Supervisors in a way that shows partnership with them, that we are all one Spotsylvania County, and that our children are not just the children of the school division, but they're the school, the children of our entire county. And when we put our children first, there's payback for us. And I've shared this story before, and I'll share it again. I had a young man that had an opportunity to live with me for a while. He came from California. He was heavily influenced by gang activity in California, and his mother insisted that he move away from California and sent him to Spotsylvania here to live with his sister. Well, eventually, when my son passed away, his sister's boyfriend put him out the house, and he came to ask me, to live with me. And eventually, I let him live with me, but the stipulation was that he would get his GED. And after a lot of struggle, Spotsylvania County provided the opportunity for my son to receive his GED. And as a result of that, he joined the military. He served our country in Korea. He served our country in Afghanistan. He pays property tax. He pays state taxes. He pays federal taxes. He's the first young man in his family that has not been a part of public assistance, because Spotsylvania County stood in the breach and provided an education, which was the key to his success. So we take education very seriously. It's more than just numbers. There's faces behind those numbers. Now, I know I spoke for a long time, so I'm going to end my comments and turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Thank you to the School Board for your hard work over the last couple of work sessions, and I appreciate your support in terms of where we are in the budget development process. I'm going to come back to that. I also want to let the School Board know that I will be having a meeting with the representatives from Mosley Architects, who, as you know, completed Phase One of our comprehensive study. Our meeting with them is to begin to focus on what the Phase Two of that study can and should involve in terms of community engagement, relative to our vision for the future, in terms of how we use our facilities, in terms of how we are going to execute our capital improvement plan, particularly in areas where we are looking at renovations or additional construction. And then leading all of that, again, out in front, is our instructional and programmatic planning, what we see as the future of Spotsylvania County Public Schools in terms of engaging our current and future generations of students. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And after we have had that meeting and begun to schedule that, I will follow back up with you, and we may even have them come. But I can tell you now that we will be trying to engage a cross-section of our community stakeholders to be a part of that ongoing and larger conversation. One thing that, a very good question that has come to me throughout this budget season, and I say it's a very good question because I understand where it comes from. When we are able, and I am able, fortunately, in a budget proposal, prior to presenting the School Board with what is a multimillion-dollar projected funding gap, you hear the success stories over the last year, the last couple of years. And so a fair question is, as you continue to improve, maybe you continue to thrive in some areas with what you currently have, why do you need more, whether it's more in terms of compensation, whether it's more in terms of additional classroom positions? And I think it's a fair question, especially when your overall student body in one year has slightly reduced in terms of enrollment. But I want to come back to what I'd shared as we go over the next week of collectively reflecting prior to the budget being approved. I want to talk about there's a big difference in maintaining quality, which, as Mr. Braswell just said, is difficult enough. But our goal isn't to be above average. Our goal isn't to meet the needs of most of our students. Our goal is to be the best school division for every single student who comes through those doors. We want to be, we want to be a refuge. We want to be a place of transformation. We want to be the lifeline for families. There's so much that we want to be for our community. And so increasing the quality of what we are doing and using the budget as a primary means of that is not meant to continue to take from our community, our taxpayers, but it's to continue to request that, as it is given to us, we will portion it back, and we will duplicate it, and we will make it better than it has ever been. And so one of the ways that we do that, and my staff on the Cabinet and those who come into contact with me who wish that I liked them a little bit less, because they know how much I like them, because I can always see additional things that they can do for me and for our school division. And there's something in most, at least administrative job descriptions, but I think you'll find it in most job descriptions in our profession, and it's usually the last bullet of every job description, and it's called "other duties as assigned." And so when people ask, "How do you do it, then, if you have all of these needs?" And I would point to, because the people in this room, the people throughout our organization, take that last bullet of their job profession, and they continually put it up at the top and say, "Other duties as assigned," or "required," or "as needed." And so I say that as a tribute to our staff, because they don't wait for us to fail because we are lacking in resources. They ask more of themselves. They ask more of each other, and they work collaboratively and as a team to continually meet the needs. But as we overcompensate in some ways, I would hope that we continue to look at not punishing that by saying, "Well, then, the last thing you need is more," but to continue to invest in the people that, regardless of what the challenge is, will continue to take on the other duties as required. So, thank you.
To my Board members, and Dr. Baker, thank you for your comments. We're going to move on now to Special Reports, 6.01, VPI Expansion Grant. Mr. Mudd.
Good evening, Chairman Braswell, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. The Office of Instruction is pleased this evening to share with you that we are the recent, that we are the recent recipients of a VPI Expansion Grant. In November of 2015, divisions around the Commonwealth who had available VPI, Virginia Preschool Initiative slots, were invited to apply for an expansion grant for an amount up to $50,000. The Office of Instruction, together with the Division Grant Writer, worked to determine the feasibility of applying for the grant. A local personnel match was required as part of the grant, as it is for all VPI personnel. After working with various departments, including Finance and Operations, it was determined that funding was available to apply for the maximum amount, $50,000, to provide funds to start up two new VPI classrooms in Spotsylvania County schools. The grant proposal included items for classroom supplies and materials, classroom furniture and technology, preschool outdoor play equipment, professional development, and other non-personnel costs. We were pleased to be notified in late December that we were awarded the VPI Expansion Grant in the amount of $70,000, $20,000 more than the initial grant request. Prior to this notification, the Division was contacted by Department of Education, who shared that consideration for additional funds was being given to Spotsylvania County schools, because we were seeking funds to start up two classrooms, and additional funding from DOE was available at that time. After dialogue, we were then awarded the funds in the amount of $70,000. As you know, both our preschool programs, Head Start and VPI, are, target our most at-risk children to have the opportunity to attend preschool. So beginning in 2016-17, with the help of these funds, 36 additional qualified children in Spotsylvania County have the opportunity for preschool services. Office of Instruction is working to finalize school sites and preparing to purchase materials and equipment. We know, of course, through research, that preschool education provides a significant benefit to students, particularly those living in poverty. In the area of vocabulary alone, preschool-age students living in poverty acquire less than one-third the vocabulary skills of students living in middle-to-upper-class families. One researcher's even found, just in the area of vocabulary alone, which is sufficient to grade-level reading comprehension, that young children need to learn about two new word meanings per day, on average, beginning at the age of one, in order to build up a stock of nearly 6,000 words needed for, to be on grade level in reading by grade two. With what we know from research about the value of preschool education and the need for students to be exposed early to skills like vocabulary, particularly those from disadvantaged homes, we're confident that the addition of two preschool classrooms in Spotsylvania County will greatly enhance the academic, social, and emotional development of 36 more preschool-age students. At this time, we'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd, for your presentation. Do we have any comments? We'll go with Mr. Blaine and then Mr. Twig.
I'm just excited to hear that kind of a report. I'm impressed, the fact that you got more than you thought for, thought about, and the fact that you're getting, going to have, we are going to have 36 more students is outstanding. But it also gives me an opportunity to say to the people in our community, if you have neighbors who have children, preschool level, tell them that they should read to their children. We used to say, if you, on the way home from the hospital, your child, and you haven't started reading to them yet, you're already late. And it's not much of an overstatement. And what you've said is so important. And so many of our principals have said to me, half of the kids coming to enroll in kindergarten never even had a book in their hand, and those kids are so far behind, they're never going to catch up. So I am just excited to have that kind of a report, and my compliments, and the compliments to the grant writer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Mr. Twig, and then Ms. Shelley.
Thank you for your diligent efforts toward quality education in Spotsylvania County. We couldn't have done it without you and your team, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelley.
It's very exciting. 36 more spots, and it just shows the diligence that we have our grant writer, and she's way more than paid for her salary from when we decided to add that position. So I think it's awesome. And so where are, my question is, we're just funding the HR part, so the teacher and the para and everything else is from the grant?
The grant covers the startup costs of the equipment. It is, it is all non-personnel. There is still the Division local match that's required, just as it is for all of our other positions.
That's great. Thank you so much. This is great.
I just have one quick question, and I'm very appreciative of your efforts in obtaining the grant, especially more than what we asked for. That's, that's pretty good. My question surrounds Head Start and VPI. I'm on the Head Start Committee. Ms. Miller provides detailed reports of the greatest caliber with demographics of progress and so forth. Does VPI offer the same? Is it, is it on the same track with Head Start in terms of the reports that are prepared, following the progress, and things of that nature? Can you speak to that?
Yes, we do. Even though we, there are two categories, Head Start and VPI, they very much work in tandem in regards to expectation, curriculum, and all the things that we would expect and that you're familiar with, mostly through the Head Start Policy Council. We also implement that to the same degree in a VPI setting.
Of testing? I mean, of recording data and so forth?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Correct. You've likely heard of the, of gold, and that's where we get most of our assessment information, both VPI and Head Start classrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Hearing no other comments, thank you for your presentation. And we'll move on to Board Committee Reports. Do we have any Board Committee Reports? Let's start with Ms. Shelley first, and then we'll go with Mr. Blaine.
I attended the Northern Virginia Special Education Regional Program. And first, I want to say that I was elected as Vice Chairman of that committee. And what this, the Regional Program, and I'm going to get more information from Ms. Richardson, so I understand it more, because it was kind of just a little overview. But it's a funding from the state that goes towards special education, and they call it a regional program because every region, everybody in the region can kind of move their students throughout the region and have those specific centers funded through this program. Our program, our Gateway Center, our Gateway Autism Center, is through the regional program. So we don't have our people, our students moving, going up to Folk Care County, for instance. But that's what this is. We, they, we approved the budget for next year, and what the budget was, was actually things that came in from the special education directors of all the divisions. So what we approved is what, what was, they were requesting, is what it was. So that's what I did with that. And then I just wanted to also mention, this is not a Board Committee Report, but I think it kind of goes here, is I left on everyone's dais seat. is. We, they, we approved the budget for next year, and what the budget was, was actually things that came in from the special education directors of all the divisions. So, what we approved is what, what was they were requesting, is what it was. So, that's what I did with that. And then I just wanted to also mention, this is not a board committee report, but I think it kind of goes here, is I left on everyone's dais seat. I went today to Richmond with the VEA to show support with the school board and the VEA, and the issues that we were talking about and advocating for are also VSBA positions, about the charter school, constitutional amendment, the virtual school bill, and then also the parental choice education savings account that Mr. Blaine mentioned earlier. So, I left everything, all the talking points that the VEA was, that they brought forth today, and that I was there as well to support. So, I just wanted to make you all aware of what we did and what I did today. So, that's with, you all have a copy of those as well.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Mr. Blaine?
I have two very brief reports, actually. One is the Commonwealth Governor's School in applying. Thank you. That's thought number one. Enrollments are still being accepted. Secondly, the legislature is currently evaluating a new funding formula for CGS, and it's anticipated that when that's approved, it's going to phase, be phased in over the next two years, and it's designed to align itself, or to be aligned with formulas used by the standards of quality. So, they're looking for a more equitable kind of a distribution, and I hope, in addition, significant more funds. The other report is about their career and tech education, and it happens that this is Career and Technical Education Month, the month of February, and an open house is scheduled by CTE on February 10th between 6:00 and 8:00 in the afternoon, or early evening. And the suggestion is that if you have middle-school students, it would be a great opportunity for them to see the facility and learn about the programs that are available, and especially for parents to understand that a little bit more. And then finally, the eighth graders would benefit, who are just on the verge of getting to high school, so they have an opportunity to see a little bit more about what CTE does actually offer. In addition, District 11, of which we're a member, is Skills USA contests will be held here, and the contest will start on February 19th, beginning at 3:00. And the contests range among students from cosmology to metal trades, with a host of leadership contests as well. So, if you have some interest in CTE, there's a number of things happening.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Freshly anointed as the Governor's School Personnel there, and you did a great job on your report. Thank you, sir. We're going to go on with the consent agenda items, 7.01, approval of the minutes and approval of donations. Dr. Martin?
On the consent agenda this evening, of the minutes of the January 11th, 2016 regular meeting, the January 19th, 2016 special meeting, which was Superintendent's Fiscal Year 2017 budget presentation, and finally donations, which are usual and customary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Shelley makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dr. Meyer with the second. We have a properly motion and seconded. Do we have all in favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposes? Seven zero pass. Action item 8.01, Ms. Flannard.
Good evening again. As the board is aware, we have started a summer pilot program this past summer for online courses, which offers an opportunity for our students to take coursework in advance from their current course load. We saw an overwhelming response to that program, and so as a pilot, we also wanted to try that during the school year to see if we were receiving the same feedback from our students. We did update the board, as you're aware, in the board current and information, so just wanted to frame that a little bit for the, our viewing audience. And before you is, as a result of that update and service provision to the students, the following policy revision outlines the parameters under which a student may be charged tuition for enrolling in a division online course or a virtual program. School Board Policy IGBGA, online courses and virtual school programs, has been updated accordingly, and it is presented this evening for first reading approval. In an effort to be transparent with our community, we really wanted to make sure that it was in writing that you could be charged for a coursework outside of your typical course. So, it's very important to note for the community that we are not talking about a remedial course. We're not talking about a course that is typically available online. We are talking about a course that a student wants to take to advance their programs, maybe even possibly to allow them to take an additional elective in the future. So, this is beyond their typical coursework. And we really felt that it was in the best interest of the community to be aware upfront that we could do this, and they would be, have the possibility of being charged. And I do want to make a special note in the recommendation that we were supposed to be before you a little bit ago, but because of the weather, it has pushed us out a little bit further. And so, it is administration's recommendation that the board grant us temporary approval of the proposed revision for implementation this evening, pending second reading approval next week on February 8th, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Flannard. We heard the presentation. We have a motion on the floor for temporary approval.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Shelley makes a motion for temporary approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Blaine seconds. Any discussion?
And I do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. You and I spoke before about this quite a bit, because this is popular. So, I see it's had a, I mean, I know I called you wanting you to open up more spots, open up more spots, because I was hearing from my community. So, evidently it's going very well.
Yes, ma'am.
I do, you know, as I spoke to you earlier, you know, anytime we charge, I want to make sure that the public is very well aware, this is nothing that would happen on their typical high school course. This is above and beyond where they are securing college credits or some other type of credit that is outside what they are allowed, needed to graduate high school.
This would be, they could take courses that they need to graduate high school, but they could take it further or closer in their program than they typically would.
Right.
So, it does give them an advantage of taking high school credits before it would be typically allowed in their trajectory.
Right. Could you go over the prices, and especially, could you touch on what happens for a child who falls under reduced lunch or free lunch, and are they charged a different amount?
Yes, ma'am. The current price is $300 for a student that qualifies for a reduced rate, then it would be $150, and a student who qualifies for free, it would be $30.
Okay, thank you. Are we turning kids away still?
We actually just opened this evening to see who was interested, and as of right now, we have 34 students that are interested.
You'll get the interest.
And this past summer, we served 48 students.
This past summer is when I remember calling and telling you, "Open up spots."
That's correct.
So, you know, if, is it counselors that are getting to these students and letting them know of this opportunity?
They can go to their school counselors, and that is part of the registration process is through counseling. But they also have opportunities via our website. It's also available there. But yes, our counseling program is very integrated into this, so that they know that these opportunities are available.
And this is for all high school students, not just juniors and seniors? This is?
That's correct. It's for all high schools. The most popular program that we have seen so far is Economic Personal Finance. Our students, so far overwhelmingly, have chosen to take that course so that they can, in their words, get it out of the way. That is how they choose to say that, so that they can take some additional elective courses.
Because it's a mandate. It's required they have it to graduate. So, a lot of, it opens up their opportunities. So, I think it's important we get the word out as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Mr. Twig?
And what if students fail the program, the course?
That's a great question. Out of the students that we've had this past summer is the data that we have, and we had 48 students participate and 42 passed that course. And out of the students that took an SOL test, there were 20 students that took a course that required a Standards of Learning test, and 17 of them passed, which is about an 85% pass rate.
That's pretty good. What about retaking the course? Are they allowed?
It would actually follow in, under our typical expunging of grade policy. For an online course, we do have a window of opportunity. If students feel that this opportunity is too much with their current, they can drop very quickly and will not have to go through a process to do that, because we do want to give them, especially in this pilot phase, where we're really trying to gain some perspective from them on how this is working for them. It is very much something that we take into consideration, because this is in addition to their current coursework.
Right. So, and then, they would pay if the course was beyond the course requirement, curriculum requirement?
That's correct.
And, but are you also saying that we're only offering extra courses? Or are you offering Algebra I to a student, and they would not pay for that? How's that work?
Yes. The current pilot that we're running right now, the courses that are being offered in the evenings and weekends are Geometry, Algebra II, Biology, Chemistry, Economics, Personal Finance, English 10 and English 12, Latin I, Psychology, Sociology, and U.S. Government.
And all of those are required courses?
They can be. Some are, some are not.
And they pay for it if it's not a requirement under their curriculum?
They pay for it if it is not a current course that they would take. For example, if you are...
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then, the capacity, present tense, you started it this past summer?
We started a pilot in the summer, which was really an opportunity to see if children would be interested. Many of our surrounding school divisions are offering opportunities for online, and we are really looking at expanding online opportunities. And one of the things that we are talking about is having a summer opportunity that is not a remedial in nature. That is an opportunity for students to continue to learn and grow and advance in their own coursework. So, we started that pilot this past summer, and as Ms. Blaylock said, she was texting me and calling me, saying, "You need to add another section," because we did start to see, what we wanted to start out with was just one or maybe two classes, very much became very popular, and we needed to extend that opportunity. And so, the next opportunity to pilot was, well, what would that look like during the school year? And so, we're going to gather some data with this opportunity and the summer to do some comparative data to see what that would bring us.
And what does your, is your staff comprised of that's overseeing this?
The staff?
Your staff.
It goes to the above duties as assigned, as...
To you?
That Dr. Baker referred to.
So, that's what you stay late and work on?
That's why I have a lot of people that also help in the instruction department. It is with our current staff that take on additional responsibilities that oversee it.
And then, is the facilitator a totally independent, computerized grader and manager? Or, and we just see the results, or are we intricately involved somehow?
We are intricately involved so much that they are our teachers. We pay our teachers off-contract time
Okay.
to support our students in this program.
Apologize for all these questions, but it's important to me, do we pay them by the course, X dollars per credit hour, or they fall under another stipend policy that we have?
Right. It's also actually under a pilot phase, because we're looking at what other school divisions are doing, as well as what we're doing. And so, we pay them based on the number of students that they have. We have a minimum course requirement of five students, but we don't allow up more than 10 students in one particular class.
And what will be our capacity next September, nine months from now?
Well, that would have to really be based on some of the data that we receive, and so that we can make some informed decisions on whether this is a program that should continue, and if it does continue, what does that look like?
And your goal for enhancing the program?
I think my, personally, and this is just Carol speaking off, I think that we really need to have an opportunity to listen to our students. And a lot of our students, as we watch right here with our third graders, are telling us that the traditional model that I grew up in, in education, is not how our students are really best learning, and that we need to think about our different approaches to instruction. And that blended model of online is really an opportunity for our students to have different learning abilities and to be able to really capture that learning in the way that they learn best, whether that's a flipped classroom, whether that's being able to work independently. I can tell you from many of the students that I've spoken to, that they will tell you that when they sit in a classroom, that they learn best when they have an opportunity to interact.
I am 100% supportive of everything you just said. That's totally encouraging, and again, speaks to the technology and the new wave of learning in our society and our country. I also, and lastly, think that this, once you create, master this project, this could be a golden opportunity for this community to reach out to our homeschool community, and even collect funds from them, in a manner of speaking. I applaud your efforts, and you have my 100% support.
Ms. Shelley?
Pardon me. Is there a limit, or can the students just take one, say, in the summertime? Can they take two classes? Is it a limit to the number that they could take if they wanted to get a couple of classes out of the way, and maybe look at maybe graduating early?
The opportunity that we have right now is, you could technically take more than one course, but we invite the parents in for one face-to-face meeting right off the cuff, so that the parents do understand that even though this is what is considered to be an online opportunity, it is rigorous. And so, they need to really understand what they're taking on in regards to the rigor. So, if you start adding multiple courses, they do need to understand the work that goes with that course. So, we have not limited that, but we have had those school counselors to be part of the dialogue of fully understanding, which is also why we're in that pilot phase of, "How many did you take? Why did you take?" Those types of additional information that we're gathering.
And then, how much is it, how many hours? Because is it like three weeks for three hours a day, or how does that work?
Right. It is a self-paced course. However, in the summer, the summer program was five weeks long. It was a five-week course, and the semester that we're trying now is 15 weeks. Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor for temporary approval of school board policy IGBGA, online courses and virtual school programs. Was motion by Ms. Shelley, properly motion, and seconded by Mr. Blaine. We'll have a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Graham.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, before we do the roll call vote, I would like to put a, probably in the form of a substitute motion, that we waive the first reading and go ahead and approve tonight. I mean, I'm sorry, the second reading and approve the first reading. Thank you, Ms. Graham, if I could get any support on that.
Okay, so, we have a substitute motion that we have approval of, and waive second reading and approval of school board policy IGBGA, IGBGA, online courses and virtual school programs offered, a motion by Ms. Blaylock, and second is by Dr. Meyer. We'll have the roll call vote, starting with Ms. Graham.
Graham, aye.
Aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to 8.02, approval of the instructional calendar. Ms. Flannard, you're still in the hot seat.
I still am in the hot seat, and this one might be a little bit hotter than the last.
Maybe a volcano.
Maybe, maybe. This evening, I am presenting the Calendar Committee's proposed calendar for 2016-2017 school year. It's important for the board to take into consideration that the calendar being proposed is very similar to the past calendar, and that's for a couple of reasons. The Calendar Committee is considering some potentially larger change...
for a couple of reasons. The Calendar Committee is considering some potentially larger changes for the 2017-2018 school calendar that does require numerous conversations, gathering data by ways of surveys and forums, to really involve our staff, our community, and our parents. And in light of some potential significant changes for 2017-2018, the Calendar Committee has really believed that we need to maintain some consistency for this year, as well as that we are one semester away from the implementation of this calendar. And so, for those reasons, you will notice that this calendar proposal before you this evening is quite similar. So, the Calendar Committee, we have, Dr. Meyer serves as our board representation. We do have three principals from all three levels that chair the Calendar Committee. And the Calendar Committee does have representatives from the Office of Instruction, Transportation, and Maintenance. There are currently 25 school staff representatives on the committee, and we do have seven parents that are on the committee, four from elementary, one from middle, and one from high school. I'd like to take a moment to remind the community as well as the board of some of the recent calendar changes that have taken place. We did add, and this is the first year that we're doing this, additional time to elementary. It was five minutes before school and five minutes at the, towards the end of school. And we added middle school additional five minutes. I will say that it is, in the recent blizzard, a significant dent in making sure that we have appropriate amount of time. So, that was very well received in regards to the calendar and the tracking of time. We increased the half-days for the elementary and the middle schools to support the closing of the school year. Our staff very much responded quite positively to that with having those half-days at the end so that they could get all of their closing requirements finished in a timely manner. We also increased the professional learning days. We increased one for a total of six throughout the school year. We included high school to have the half-days as well. And it is very significant in regards to permitting our support staff to participate in the professional learning. If the, on those half-days, our students that are served and get support from our parent educators can now receive professional learning on those six days in order to better serve their students. So, the committee had several discussion points that they reviewed. The start date was at the top of that list. Most recent community and staff data did indicate a preference for post-Labor Day start. It was consistent with most of our neighboring counties at that time. We very much talked about the professional learning for teachers. We talked about the time, as I noted before, to wrap up the end of the school year. They talked about conferences and scheduling events to make sure that we avoided holidays. The length of each nine-week grading period was a consideration, and also the best timing for parent-teacher conferences.
Ms. Lennard, before you move on, is there a possibility to tweak the screen? Some of the bullets are being masked by the screen and I-
They got the same one up there. The same ones up there, so they know what they're doing.
I'll ask Renee.
Okay. This one, this particular slide's okay, but the previous ones, they were masked.
Yeah. You can't see the last bullet at all.
Yeah, it's been-
Kind of condensed.
Or that one.
We have to switch out the computer.
Would you like for her to start back at the beginning?
No, no need to start from the beginning. We didn't want to mess up your flow, but we really want to see what you wrote.
Yes, sir. I don't mind starting over. We do. So does the community.
And you're from the draft calendar highlights, but we just want to be able to see all the slides, I'm sure.
Perhaps while they're working on that, you could tell us some of the parent parental feedback in terms of the starting date or some off-the-hand, off-the-cuff kind of comments.
It's not all on here. Okay. I believe this is the slide that we were on. Thank you. So, the draft of the calendar that I believe you all have before you is similar to the current 2015-16 calendar that we're living right now. In regards to the inclement weather days and how they're made up, is very similar. The holidays that we observed are very similar, and the number of professional learning days. I would like to note that spring break next year is a little bit later and as we are experiencing a very early spring break this year. There is one draft that is being proposed this evening. Feedback on the draft calendars were provided to various groups. The Calendar Committee itself did vote, as well as the teacher advisory that Dr. Baker has, we put it before the teaching staff that he gets to meet with on a regular basis, and we also put it in front of the Parent Advisory Council as well, and received some, the feedback on this calendar as well. And with all of that feedback taken into consideration, which is why you have the calendar in front of you that you have this evening. The current Calendar Committee 2017-2018 research, we are going to continue to ask Dr. Meyer to be part of our group. And we are going to have, the committee chairs will once again have one from elementary, middle, and high, Mr. Cliff Conway, Ms. Deborah Frazier, and Mr. Alan Jacobs. And we are looking to enlarge the committee. We're looking to have one representative per school, as well as additional parents on the committee, and we are looking to add students to the Calendar Committee as well. And we are going to be looking at the utilization of time and structure the calendar to maximize that time. And we're going to be discussing and researching additional instructional calendar options. For example, if we did look at a pre-Labor Day calendar, then what are some options that we could look at in regards to a pre-Labor Day? Would that be something like ending a semester with winter break? There are various year-round models that are out there that we could look to consider, and those may be able to help us provide targeted intervention enrichment, as well as professional learning opportunities. We are also going to explore start and end times, and analyzing that current research as it pertains to the best times for our different developmental stages, as well as ages of our children. And then, at this time, it is administration's recommendation for the board to consider the proposed 2016-2017 instructional school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lennard, for your briefing, and we apologize to you for interrupting your flow.
Not a problem.
And when I come out of closed session, if I'm bleeding, when I ask Deputy Carter to investigate my colleagues. We have a, we heard Ms. Lennard's presentation for the approval of the 2016-17 instructional calendar. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the 2016?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Blaylock to approval of the 2016-17 instructional calendar, seconded by Dr. Meyer. Roll call vote, before I go to roll call vote, discussion, discussion. We're going to start with Ms. Graham first.
As last year, I'm disappointed that we are going to be getting out so late next year again because of our post-Labor Day start. And a lot of people share that concern, but I am energized by thinking that we are going to be doing some more in-depth research to a pre-Labor Day start, hopefully one that ends the first semester before Christmas break, and even looking at some year-round options for some students. And I think that that is going to make it so that I can just go ahead and pass this one, so that we can look at some other options earlier next year, get some feedback, and get something creative and fun for 17 and 18.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Any other comments? Mr. Blaine and then Ms. Shelley?
I'm very glad to hear that you're going to be looking more intensively at the pre-Labor Day start, frankly. My own background experiences with a division that did that all the time, routinely for several years, and I'm, my recollection is that it worked very well and cut down an amount of planning time annually that they had to go through. It was much more simple to set up a good program, knowing when they're going to start, and the routine worked out. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Shelley?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I was disappointed as well, I, yes, last year, because I have quite a few people last year and then as well this year, say that they would prefer the pre-Labor Day start due to AP testing instruction, getting a lot more instruction in before all the snow comes around and we see what happens with snow. So, I just wanted to mention that. But I had a couple of questions about possible tweaks with the calendar. And January 2nd, when we come back from, I'll wait till you have it in front of you.
Thank you. I forgot my folder. I made sure you all had yours and forgot my own. Okay.
So, when we come back from winter break on January 2nd, that's a national holiday. I just wanted to put it out there, that that is a national holiday. And then, but I have a couple of considerations about, and I understand the committee, but right now, the end of the first quarter is November 7th. It's a Monday. If it was just moved up one day to November the 4th, then that would move report cards up one week.
Yes.
It would bring the conference night up prior to, the week before Thanksgiving-
Yes.
-versus having a full week after report cards, then a week of Thanksgiving, and then the first week of December having conferences. And then also, it would kind of equalize that first and second quarter, making them both 44 days versus, and I have to see, 45 and 43 days. They would both be 44 days. So, that was, that was just a thought. And then, also, the professional development half-day on April 28th, if by chance to move it up to the April 14th, which is the day before spring break, because April 28th is later, it's, it's just a few days before the AP test begins. And so, therefore, our high school AP teachers would be losing another couple of hours of instruction right before that AP exam, that some of them would be, I think they start May 1st or 2nd, depending on the weekend. So, giving them a little bit of extra time, just that one more day, so just moving up that half-day. But those are just some suggestions. I don't know if those are even how the board feels about that, if that's something that could be done. Just wanted to put that out there and mention it to the board.
Ms. Shelley, thank you. Mr. Twig and then Ms. Blaylock.
I don't like the creativity to the extent that we have to go to school all year long. I'm certain the constituents in my district, Livingston, would not like that with all of the travel involved, or additional travel. Albeit, if you want some serious creativity, I think we should end the school year the day of the last SOL. However, how many people are on your committee?
Currently, there's 25, but we're looking to expand that if we're going to be looking at some creativity.
And how many of those voted to start school after Labor Day this past?
The actual, the committee used-
Or did you vote?
The committee actually took the data that we did, I guess it was three years ago, Dr. Meyer, three years ago, and in which we put out a survey to the community at large.
Okay, you let that be your vote then, huh?
Yes, sir. And in reviewing that data, the committee did very much talk about whether we should do pre and post, and you certainly can talk to it too if you'd like, Dr. Meyer. But the conversation was to utilize the data that we had gathered and maintain that post for this particular year, especially because we are looking at it being February, that it's being presented to the community, and as well as maintaining the opportunity to even explore some different options in the future.
Sure.
They felt that it was best to just maintain where we, where the current voice of the community was.
Thank you. And also, what is the last day of school this year? Pardon my ignorance, everybody?
No, that's, it is June 17th.
Wow, okay. And then, when is the last SOL this year and on this schedule?
The SOL window varies. The state gives us a window to be able to operate within. And so, each school does create their testing calendar within that window, also allowing to make sure that they have make-ups, because we are required to make sure that 95% of our students take that exam.
Sure.
So, that window is usually right after it opens, typically right around the Memorial Day.
Is the last SOL?
No, it begins.
Window starts and runs up to the last day of school or about a week and a half before?
It really does. I will tell you, though, most schools don't choose to test most of their students that last week. Really, if you're testing that last week, you're making sure you get that 95%.
Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Blaylock?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. This is always a hot topic. Let's just call it what it is. But I, you know, Ms. Graham and Ms. Shelley know how I feel about both of them, but I'll be very honest with you. I've been following this data since I've moved here. And yes, there are people who want to start before Labor Day. They are not the majority. The survey didn't come back that way. Every survey I have seen since I've been on this board has never come back that way. So, I think one thing is very important that you're sharing with us tonight, that we're going to be seeing a very different calendar-
Wow. Okay. And then when is the last SOL this year and on this schedule?
The SOL window varies. The state gives us a window to be able to operate within and so each school does create their testing calendar within that window, also allowing to make sure that they have makeups because we are required to make sure that 95% of our students take that exam.
Sure.
So, that window is usually right after, it opens typically right around the Memorial Day.
Is the last SOL?
No, it begins.
Window starts and runs up to the last day of school or about a week and a half before.
It really does. I will tell you though, most schools don't choose to test most of their students that last week. Really, if you're testing that last week, you're, you're making sure you get that 95%.
Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. This, this is always a hot topic. Let's just call it what it is. But I, you know, Ms. Grant and Ms. Shelley know how I feel about both of them, but I'll be very honest with you. I've been following this data since I've moved here and yes, there are people who want to start before Labor Day. They are not the majority. The survey didn't come back that way. Every survey I have seen since I've been on this board has never come back that way. So, I think one thing is very important that you're sharing with us tonight that we're going to be seeing a very different calendar in 17, 18 because we need to get community input and prepare. Yeah, I do tend to vote with what my community wants and that, that is where it should be. So, yeah, if we went with the, if you went with data from a survey from the community, I'm, I'm glad. That's exactly what you should be doing. So, I, I can agree with you that this year, this very similar calendar, I, I will get my support and any kind of input as we're moving to this next calendar that will have the more, I don't, radical is probably a strong word, but the changes that are different for us in this community, the more forums we can have, the more input we can have. I'm glad you're expanding the committee. I wouldn't even mind seeing a parent from each district on there. Might be a good idea and, but I will say as far as the post-Labor Day, if you're looking at the data, that's what this community has asked for and that those numbers don't lie. We can't, we can't make that up. So, I understand both of you have heard that. I've heard it too. I even, I even posted a year ago and had 1,200 replies within a few hours hugely, hugely in favor of after post-Labor Day. Now, the last two years, Labor Day came so late and that I think has really kind of, as Mr. Twig pointed out, we, we end on the 17th of June. So, I think the, because Labor Day can fall so late and these last two years hit us so hard, I, I believe the conversation has come up. But the one thing I would ask is that at the end of the day is to come up with a calendar when you're being creative, whether it's before Labor Day and if that's the way we're going to go, we're going to go, is just do what's best for the academic learning of the student. If, if data shows going before is going to academically help staff, help them master the skill before their standardized test or however the data is coming back for that, then that's something this division has to look at. If the data shows that high schoolers should be going later in the day, which there's a lot of data that says that, if that's something the committee is looking at, then we need to look at that and we need to pull that data, show it to the community and come at it from sort of a collective body. It's something that we can all work with and live with, but at the end of the day, all I ask for is when this committee gets together, give us a great academically based calendar that is 100% what is best for a student to learn. That's why we're here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Ms. Grant.
I totally concur with Dawn's changes, especially not starting back on the federal and state holiday after break. So, I mean, I don't, should, does anybody else agree with those changes? Should we do a substitute motion? Should we? I mean, do we want to start school back on the 2nd?
I know if we change the calendar, if we get rid of that, if we don't come back on the 2nd and we come back on the 3rd, we have to add back another day somewhere else. I just wanted to put it out there for knowledge. Now, the other things that I propose, I don't know if the rest of the board, I don't want to make a motion because it doesn't sound like anyone else is, is bringing, is, is interested in those other changes, but I wanted to put it out there in case anyone did agree with me, then maybe somebody else would say, I agree, maybe we should. You said it. If we have the support, I don't want to, I don't want to waste all of the time with all these substitute motions if it's not going to come through.
Dr. Meyer.
To answer Ms., to answer Ms. Graham's question, it would require a separate motion and a second to put it on the table. I'd like to just comment beforehand as being part of the calendar committee and privy to a lot, a lot of discussion. One, to look at before Labor Day, we had a lot of discussion at the committee level. I mean, it was several days of discussion, several meetings. And what we came back to was what the parents, what the parental survey showed us. We don't have any other data to go by. If you listen to the teachers, especially AP teachers, they would like to start beforehand, but that's one group. The question that I come back to is, one, we do need to refresh that data so we have, because the community's thinking may have changed. That's part of the discussion that we had, especially with late starts and late finishes. At the same time, if we were to start early, one week is not enough. You don't gain what you're trying to gain in one week. It has to be two, maybe three weeks to accomplish that. It's what I referred to in the committee as the Illinois calendar because I grew up with that. Mr. Blaine referenced that where, you know, you start August 10th and you finish May 31st. In Mississippi. So, I mean, it's not, it's a very common model, but is this community ready? The other piece to it that you have the, what the academics want, the teachers want, but we have to have the students in school, the parents have to want it because if the students aren't in school, then if we were to start three weeks early and the parents don't send the kids until the day after Labor Day, you got to make up three weeks. You know, we have to have the parent community with us in order to make it effective. The other thing is having comparability because we have regional programs with our other school divisions that work with us regionally. That's a critical element. It's amazing that, not knowing that this was going to come up, but today's paper, you saw the report, if you read it, with King George doing a parental survey. Interesting, the majority was favoring after post-Labor Day. Now, you know, they haven't decided what they're going to do, but that's what the survey showed. It was just coincidental, it was in this morning's paper and we're talking about it right now. You know, I seconded the motion as we have it because when the committee met, once they separated pre, pre and post and that decision was made, then we looked at variations of post and came up with three variations and then put that out for a vote and came back with A. So, you know, we did look at other options, but you know, the majority went with A and that's where I am. Thank you.
Any other comments? Dr. Baker?
I would like to just share a few thoughts regarding the comments that have been shared in, in the presentation. I, I remember three years ago, one of the, the concerns had to do with pre versus a post start and I think that if I'm remembering a lot of what occurred back then, it was that there was really no difference in how time was proposed to being used in an instructional calendar outside of a fairly arbitrary start date, whether it be a week, a week and a half, sometimes two weeks, sometimes a week and two days, it varied each year. And in looking at that, there wasn't necessarily a difference. You still had, basically had the same number of days. You have 180 days. And so, I think the committee this year wanted to remain consistent because we would like the next committee's task to, we want them to have plenty of time to work with the community. And I think the other thing about a survey, and I would just share this as a, for consideration, depending on the questions that we ask, we will get a certain kind of response. And so, prior to asking the questions, we need to present the case for asking the question. And I don't think the question anymore needs to be whether it's pre or post. It needs to be on how are we maximizing the use of time and is there a decided advantage that we can identify by moving or shifting days earlier into the summer or having breaks at different times and exploring different types of models? And simultaneous with that research, we need to, in a, in a way that we probably have never done before, engage the, the communities of Spotsylvania and that includes the parent community, that includes the teacher and educator community, and I think it includes the student community too. And because as our student body becomes increasingly diverse, in some areas increasingly transient, it's not just a matter of how we start and end with the same students, but it's how we go throughout the continuum of a school year and meet needs as students come in in November and leave in February. We need to be able to meet those needs. And so, I would ask that we look at what we need to do differently to maximize time. We're not going to find research that says starting a week before Labor Day or a week after Labor Day is going to make an academic or an instructional difference that we can quantify. But I do think that we can look at how we use time. I'm also very interested in how we can build in time that is not makeup days for snow for staff professional development, especially at the front part of the school year. Each year, we are trying to, to provide high-quality professional development outside of our professional learning communities at the midpoint of the school year or in November at a time when basically the school year like a marathon has started and we don't have any stopping, yet we're trying to get people to train and learn on the run. If we could build in more upfront time in the school year where teachers and staff can engage in professional development to better equip them for the start, that would be something else that I would ask that we look at. But outside of that, and don't forget please, school board, we are still a state that has a law that says we are to start after Labor Day. And the reason we forget that is because every year for the past three years, and now I think we can call it a trend, we have had significant inclement weather. So, we know that we could apply and receive the waiver as many other school divisions do. But in terms of what Mr. Blaine brought up from other states and the ability to get into a rhythm and to be, to be able to have some predictability, I don't think we're going to have three or four or five straight years of no weather, but the fact is that law still remains that we can't technically guarantee that we can start before Labor Day absent a waiver from the state. So, I, I bring that to you for consideration as you determine whether you want to make any amendments to this one, but I do appreciate the committee's process because I think they wanted to maintain the consistency, but then devote as much time as possible to our next endeavor.
Hey, Dr. Baker, is there any other discussion? Any other? Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Grant. Oh, call for a question.
I'd call for a comment first.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Twig.
That said about the law, I think that suddenly it puts that question into the moot point zone and we appreciate everything your committee's doing and I say continue to rely on the committee action. There are many ways by which parental intervention could be obtained by y'all to get results for your committee action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. We're going to call for the vote. We have a motion on the floor to approve the calendar for 2016-17 instructional calendar made by, a motion by Ms. Blaylock and seconded by Dr. Meyer. Call for a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grant.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Flannard.
Thank you.
Relief. Informational items, head start discipline reports, usual customary. Moving on to 10.01 unfinished business, any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Hearing none. 10.02 new business, any new business? New business? Hearing none. Close meeting items. Meeting, let it be resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. We have a motion to go into closed session. Moved by Mr. Blaine, seconded by Ms. Grant. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? We are in closed session, seven zero. Turn back to open session by Ms. Grant, seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? We're back in open session with a seven zero vote. Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. We have a motion to certify the closed session. Moved by Mr. Blaine, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Twig. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye. Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye.
Certification approved, seven zero. If we can have Dr. Martin read the closed, closed meeting notes.
The motion from closed meeting is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, retirements, and requests by two employees for extended leave for the 2015-16 school years presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. We have a motion. Moved by Ms. Blaylock, second.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Meyer. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposes? Hearing none, seven zero. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Shelley, seconded by Ms. Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. The time is, he said eight thirty, eight thirty-nine.